Well, he can join when he gets here.
That's fine, 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 fine.
All right, so normally we would wait. What? I've been told to wait by our. We're having technical difficulties just long enough so you could get in the room. I'll get. Does this echo? Yes, we're on. Let us know when you're ready for us to start. We don't need to do a actual roll call because we are all visually available, correct? And there we go, we'll get past roll call. So we'll move forward to the flag salute, and if everyone is still standing with me, salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, so before we start with the meeting, we'll give a few pointers for those at home who are watching, if they want to partake in the meeting. Similar to the last years, those wanting to comment can call in by phone, and the phone number is located on the top of your screen and on the agenda. When you want to speak, press star nine so that we know you want to speak. It'll raise your hand. You will be prompted when it's your turn to press star six to unmute. Something really important to remember, which people seem to be forgetting a lot, is that once you have us on the phone and you're waiting to make your comment, turn the volume off of your video feed because you will get a time delay, and unfortunately, it means that sometimes people don't raise their hand in time to be able to comment. We'll go to the public commenters on the phone first, and after we finish those, we'll go to those in the public, and we will not return to those on the phone. So it's the responsibility of the folks watching who want to comment to be sure to raise their hand before we leave that section. Also, you will have three minutes to speak, and when you have 30 seconds left, you will hear a tone. I don't know if we have the tone. You'll hear a sound, and you'll know that you have 30 seconds to wrap up. And at that time, you will be muted. Don't take it personally, it's the same amount of time for everybody. So with that, I think we can move on to the CAO to see if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bass, there are no modifications to the agenda today.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We will go, are we out to public? Do we have any hands up yet, since I'm still learning where to find them? Nikki, do you see any hands? Okay, zero one one six, you said? All right, so we have a public speaker, and this is on the consent calendar. So zero one one six, you'll have three minutes, and I believe that's you, Ash.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, my name is Ash Teeter with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, humboldtfc.com. I am commenting on item four of the consent calendar, authorizing the county to receive grant funding as part of implementing the Voters' Choice Act. Just as the corporate media has sensationalized pandemic by pushing COVID fear, it's also marginalized thousands of sworn affidavits alleging voter fraud and irregularities in the 2020 elections. These affidavits are sworn under a penalty of perjury punishable by five years, imprisoned for lying. Statements made by the corporate media are not. You can figure for yourself which might be more legitimate. It is no secret that COVID had a huge impact on how elections were conducted in 2020 and going forward. If we permit fear to dictate our actions, then we might see the consequences of this. Mailing out ballots to everyone on the voter roll is different than just mailing out to those who request to vote by mail, adding multiple opportunities for potential fraud. Rasmussen reports that in the 2016 and 2020 presidential elections, 59% of likely voters were concerned that increased use of vote by mail would lead to more vote fraud. Vote harvesting fraud isn't the end of the problems with vote by mail. States relying on this method inevitably send piles of ballots to obsolete addresses or registrants who have died. That's because voter rolls are filled with errors. California voter rolls remain tainted in this way. Abundant current and terrifying proof of voter fraud is staggeringly simple to find online. The Heritage Foundation's database details 1,113 criminal convictions for vote fraud, including 192 for fraudulent use of absentee ballots since January of 2000. A few examples I found from the 2020 elections are as follows. This is California 2020. Richard Howard, criminal conviction for buying votes, ballot petition fraud. Also, California 2020. Louis Wise, criminal conviction, buying votes, ballot petition fraud. Also, California 2020. Christopher Williams, criminal conviction, buying votes, ballot petition fraud. Another California 2020. Nikki Huntley, criminal conviction, buying votes, ballot petition fraud. This is only one of many kinds of fraud that I have found in the search in the database. What about the people who didn't get caught? That's all I gotta say, just think about it, thank you.
All right, thank you. So Nikki, I see no hands up in mine? No? All right, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to comment on an item on the consent calendar? Welcome. Ryan.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just want to address item D seven, the 2022 Tsunami Preparedness Week proclamation. So this is an annual proclamation that we submit recognizing Tsunami Preparedness Week, which this year is March 21st through 25th. During this week, we're going to be engaging in a number of preparedness activities beginning on March 19th. So we're going to be observing it a little bit early in Humboldt County this year, starting with a walking evacuation drill in the community of Manila. So if any of you are available that Saturday, I encourage you to come out and walk those evacuation routes with the community. The following week, on the 23rd, we're going to be issuing a countywide Humboldt alert notification, as well as a WIA, or Wireless Emergency Alert Notification, that's going to be initiated by the National Weather Service. And the following day, on the 24th, the community of Shelter Cove is going to be conducting a walking evacuation drill and sounding their tsunami sirens. So the intent of this proclamation is to recognize the importance of preparedness and hazard education in our communities. So I thank you all for your support and consideration of this proclamation. And today, joined with me are a few members of the Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group. So I just want to highlight the good work that they've done in bringing education to Humboldt County, and again, thank you for your consideration.
All right, and Ryan, we normally don't have the public commenters get asked questions, but since you're staff, and probably should have had you under that, Supervisor Bone appears to have had his question for you.
On the sirens, I was somewhere this weekend, and they were saying that the sirens had to be manually pushed, and they were wondering that they had to hold the button for the siren. And I'm just wondering, is that true? Because it makes me think, what about the poor guy holding the button, and he's pushing the tsunami? It just seems counterproductive, so.
So several of the sirens are remote activated through radio signals.
Yes.
With the sirens that do get manually activated, you don't have to stand there holding it the whole time. It's basically a lockbox, you press the button to activate it.
Okay.
We don't want them standing there during a tsunami event.
Yeah, that's what I remembered I needed to talk to you about, we'll talk about it afterwards. They are quite concerned.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we'll count that as a staff presentation. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
We might have more questions for you. All right, now we'll go to general public comment on this item. Yes, welcome, Alex. No, I mean on the consent calendar. But you can ask.
My name is Alex Stillman, I'm here on behalf of the Aviation Committee and also the aviation community. And I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors very much for putting these items on your agenda and adopting them today, dealing with the fuel tank at Murray, which is really needed, and the hangars which have been in electric for years. And I know the aviation community is excited about that. The one thing I was concerned about is that it has to go through a process of your city, of your county council, risk management and administrative offices. I don't know how long that takes, but definitely the fuel tank at Murray is very much needed at this time because it causes sort of a hazard. You either fly to Arcata, ACV, or you go to Fortuna, FOT, and you pick up your gas there, or you keep it in your hangar. So thank you very much for moving forward on this item, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And we'll see if we can get an answer to that how long question when we go back to the board. Does anyone else want to speak on the consent calendar? All right, seeing no one, we'll go back to the board. We have a motion and a second, and Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for maintaining this readiness related to tsunamis. I mean, it's just something that's, we're gonna have to keep doing. All of us who witnessed the tsunami of, what was it? How long ago was that, the last one from Japan? Yeah, we're, I guess you'd count us as tsunami survivors, to a certain degree. And, but we know that if that, even though at a high tide, the devastation around Humboldt Bay would have been pretty significant. I mean, there, and so we dodged a bullet, so to speak, on that. And, but we had some pretty decent warning, and people were ready for it. But the one that is generated locally is not going to have hours of warning. It's going to be very, very quick, and we're going to have to be ready. And I just want to appreciate everyone's efforts because it's, hopefully, it'll never pay off. Hopefully. That's not going to happen within our lifetimes. But I want to thank everyone for all their efforts.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Any other comments on the consent? Supervisor Madron?
Yes, I just wanted to thank, thank the individual who we all know very well that's constantly putting these incredible articles in the paper that is totally educating us about tsunamis, about the history of tsunamis, and how we can prepare. I think that's an incredibly wonderful community asset that we have through Lori, so thank you.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. I couldn't see her behind Ryan. Okay, there, good. Thank you, Lori. All right, seeing no other comments. Nikki, do we get our vote screen? Proceed to vote, when we do?
Apparently I voted for you guys, so let me erase that.
That is really funny. I think there's accurate.
Is it accurate?
It's accurate.
Five to zero, motion passes, five to zero, thank you.
Technology is really challenging and fun sometimes. All right, so we'll move on to our, we have one special presentation today, and that comes to us from aviation. And it's a presentation on the Aviation Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act Funding Project. And so we do have Cody Rogatz with us, our Director of Aviation, and his team.
And his bodyguards.
Yeah. Welcome, Cody. Yeah, I don't think we've seen you in person here yet.
Couldn't remember the procedures for in-person here, thank you, CAO. Thank you, Chair Bass and Board of Supervisors for having us here today to discuss the future of your Humboldt County airports. I would like to start by giving a brief background on the Aviation Department. I know all of you are intimately familiar with this background, but I would like to highlight a few things for the public. The Department of Aviation was officially created by your supervisors in September 2018, thereby splitting the six county airports out from the Public Works Department, at the same time that you hired me to lead this new department. Since that time, this board, the CAO team, and numerous others within the county have been incredibly supportive in building our Aviation Department to set us up for success and rebuilding of our airport system. In December 2018, three months after the creation of the department, the county received a 17-page compliance letter from the Federal Aviation Administration, or the FAA. Since that time, we have been working very diligently to correct the noncompliant items that the FAA identified throughout their letter. Many of these adjustments have necessitated us to make unpopular changes to correct historical business practices that have become ingrained in the Humboldt County Airport system. Additionally, we had a related lawsuit that was filed against the county of Humboldt that was dismissed approximately two months ago due to the improvements we have made on our compliance-related shortcomings. The changes we had to make, specifically those around adjusting rents, were even more unpopular due to the lack of maintenance and infrastructure improvements implemented at the county's six airports over the past several decades. However, these changes were made to ensure our compliance moving forward and ensure our eligibility for tens of millions of dollars in federal funds today and moving forward. We are before you today to discuss the start of that rebuilding process. The projects that we'll be discussing today are focused on improving all six of our county airports, utilizing the $18.2 million that we have been allocated in CARES Act funding. In addition to these projects, we are also competing for approximately $12 million in other federal funding to repave our main runway and upgrade our antiquated electrical systems at the California Redwood Coast Humboldt County Airport, or ACV. These improvements will equate to an approximately $30 million investment in our airports over the next two years in federal funds. So let's see if I can figure out the technology, not having been before you in person for over two years. Nikki, I think you have my presentation there.
There you go.
Thank you. Nikki helped me with some technical difficulties already this morning in getting this before your board, so I appreciate it. So the CARES Act, again, we were allocated $18.2 million in the CARES Act, which your board approved acceptance of in early 2020. Since that time, we have not expended those funds or drawn on those grant funds as we were addressing our compliance and related legal matters. We've developed a capital improvement plan with the help of my friends here from Armstrong Engineering. Behind me, Chris Knox and Justin Pete, who, Chris leads their engineering department, and Chris leads their planning department, or excuse me, Justin leads their planning department. These CARES Act funds are planned to be expended in three main categories. The first being the operating expense for our payroll, and this shows a breakdown of pre TODAY, so the 2020 through the 2022 first-line item, and what we anticipate in personnel costs through the end of our CARES Act eligibility, which is June of 2024. That equates to $7.1 million. I would like to highlight within that category, as we collect those funds from our CARES grant, we can then utilize those funds or reallocate those to other needs within our airport system. The less, the next two categories, the terminal building and area improvements, are focused on rehabilitating and remarking our parking lot, which would increase our capacity by over 50%. As many of you have heard over the last nine months with all of our airline growth at ACV, especially in high-demand times, our parking has become extremely constrained for our customers. This over 50% increase would have, at the end of the projects, their Phase One and Phase Two, well over 500 parking spaces available. Today, we have 375. The second item, the terminal building study, is the next step we need to take in our efforts to get federal funding in the future to rehabilitate, reconstruct, and reconfigure our terminal. Not only do we have problems in the parking lot during high-demand periods, our current terminal was designed to handle 30-seat aircraft. And work was last done on that terminal in approximately 2012, as far as major changes. That's over 10 years ago now, and those changes that were implemented approximately 10 to 12 years ago were done to address the aircraft serving the terminal in the community at that time. Those were 30-seat twin-turbo prop aircraft that we had regular service from. Today, we have regular service from a 737 that seats 189 people. And space is quite constrained just with that aircraft on the ground, but we often have that aircraft, in addition to a 76-seat regional jet sitting next to it. And those passengers coming off and getting on that aircraft all at the same time, as I've phrased it, leads to kind of a sardine can feeling inside of our current terminal. So this terminal building study, we've discussed with the FAA, and that's our next sequential step to set us up for future federal funding successfully to address those terminal shortcomings with our current facility. The last category, the general aviation airport improvements, you can see we have $5 million allocated to basically rebuilding as many of our hangars as we possibly can. And that's where Justin and Chris will be involved with all of these last two categories, but certainly evaluating our hangars. Our hangars, the majority of them, were constructed 30-plus years ago for our airports across the county. ACV is kind of an exception with that. It was approximately 10 to 12 years ago that the ACV hangars were put up there in McKinleville. Outside of that, there's been no major terminal, or excuse me, hangar reconstruction or additions in approximately the last 30 years. Additionally, there's not been a maintenance program implemented for our hangars for ongoing maintenance needs, and this has caused a lot of functional issues for our tenants, which we have over 100 hangar tenants across our four airports along the 101 corridor. That being ACV in McKinleville, Murray Field Airport in Eureka, Ronerville Airport just outside of Fortuna, and the Garberville Airport just outside of the Garberville community.
Director Rogatz, do you mind questions in the middle of your presentation?
Sure, sure.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, Cody, so we've got approximately 84 hangars that were built 30 years ago, taking out the ACV. So what's the average size of a hangar?
I couldn't say off the top of my head, but the average hangar can fit the majority of general aviation aircraft.
3,000 square foot?
Fifty by 50, 2,500-ish square feet, yeah.
Twenty, okay, 2,500. So with your estimate, we'll have about, actually better than, about $62,000 per hangar to rebuild them, which is well over $2 a square foot. Are we looking at the point of just taking them down and building? Because I mean, besides any fixtures, there's no restrooms, there's no running water, there's no anything else, there's lights and power.
Absolutely.
Are we looking at maybe, instead of doing that, maybe a full-blown tear-down? Because you can build a house for, well, I don't know if you can anymore, but, but you can get an engineered tent building, you know, and everything else, far less than $2 a square foot. So even if we replaced all 84 hangars, the $5 million should more than cover it, right?
Yeah, so what we're trying to do is maximize our reach. And you're right, I think, on the cost for a house. Unfortunately, everything, once you put it inside of an airport perimeter fence, the cost seemingly goes up exponentially. But we're trying to expand and cover as many of these hangars as we possibly can. And when I say cover the hangars, that's doing the maintenance, rehabilitating it, or reconstructing it. Like, I think you're alluding to Supervisor Bass, or, excuse me, Supervisor Bone.
It just gets to the point like a car when it gets in an accident. Don't, we can buy a new one for $60,000, let's not spend 50 to fix it, or more than its actual value, so.
And exactly, through the chair, that's, yep, sorry.
No, just wondering, that's fine, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And that's why we're working with our engineers upfront, is to evaluate those for structural integrity and making sure we're getting a maximum bang for our buck in the reconstruct, rehab, and maintenance of those hangars. Nikki, help? Oh, I don't see it. Yep. Okay. So this is just some examples of what our current hangar infrastructure looks like. There's a photo there, or a couple photos from Murray Field on top. And then you can see in the lower left-hand corner, our Garberville hangars in their current condition. And they're not even a fully-fledged hangar with a door right now, and we're evaluating that. We've also heard, and I've heard from the Garberville community, particularly the aviation community, on their need for restroom facilities at that airport. And I met recently with Supervisor Bushnell at the Garberville Airport, and some interested community members discussing what our future might hold for those hangars. But as Supervisor Bone identified, we feel that, and we'll evaluate this to make sure we're getting our best bang for the buck, but we feel that Garberville might be an ideal candidate for us to demolish those hangars and rebuild from scratch, including at the end of the hangar base, adding on a restroom facility, not just for our tenants that are based at that airport, but visitors to the Southern Humboldt region. We've included a couple of cost breakdowns, and those are very preliminary estimates. One of the items that your board just approved on the consent calendar, and thank you for your support of that, was having Armstrong assist us with this hangar evaluation so we can come up with that game plan moving forward. I would like to also highlight the timeline on this. The evaluation that we'll get underway with immediately, like tomorrow, with Armstrong and their team, is to get this evaluation done over the next two or three months. And they're getting bids, or requesting bids, so we can begin this work right away in 2022.
Supervisor Bone?
I see the hangar evaluations up there, it's $150,000, but we just approved a contract not to exceed 50. Am I missing something, or?
You're not missing anything, you have, through the chair, you have a great eye for detail there, Supervisor Bone. So the $150,000 is just an estimate. What we're doing with Armstrong is evaluating the hangars and identifying the ones that we can get under work, or get working on immediately, that there's no structural issues with. Further to that, we will likely be before your board here next month with a recommendation for a structural engineer to evaluate some of those further, so that's the approximate cost there. Rehabilitating and remarking the parking lot at ACV, as I mentioned before, we've had certain situations primarily around the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday last year in 2021, where we were way over on demand compared to our capacity. Our current parking lot, you can see through the sketch there underneath those black markings. Again, the capacity there between short and long term is approximately 375 spaces. This preliminary design here would bump that up to 575 spaces. This includes to the north, reworking that parking lot, which we use as an overflow parking lot currently. It used to be a foundation and a structure there, but it's now kind of become overgrown, but we do still utilize it in these overflow situations. But reworking and paving that would be our first phase. That would add approximately 60 to 62 new spaces. And then that would add capacity for us to go back to the main parking lot and start reconfiguring and remarking that, and getting new pavements down, modern infrastructure. I've talked to many of the, in the community, and many of you supervisors about our current parking lot setup. We do plan to come before the board with an RFP, requesting to go out for proposals for a parking lot partner moving forward. I anticipate that our current partner will be submitting to that, but one of our focuses in that RFP endeavor is going to be modernizing the parking lot from the customer perspective. So allowing for a credit card machine, not necessarily a person in a booth like we've historically had out there. But all of that will be incorporated into this overall project to really modernize that piece. The other thing I want to highlight, both on the last- The other thing I want to highlight, both on the last slide and this slide here, is we're trying to focus on projects that we wouldn't normally be allowed to use federal funding for, our normal pots of FAA funding that we receive. The parking lot would not be eligible because it's a revenue-producing area, and the hangars the same. CARES Act is much more lenient as far as what's eligible, and so we're trying to focus on areas we know we need to rebuild that we wouldn't be able to get federal funding for in the future. CARES Act is kind of an anomaly as far as that eligibility piece. Any questions?
Supervisor Bone has another question. They're supposed to be just soaking it in.
Don't give me visuals. And so the parking lot just to the due south of the terminal, that will be strictly for all the rental car, and that will be, that's sufficient for them with the increased?
So we are in conversations with two rental, additional rental car companies. Currently, we have National Enterprise. We used to have Hertz, but unfortunately, they left and went through some bankruptcy issues as a corporation when CARES, or excuse me, COVID rattled our industry in a very unprecedented way. But we're working with our current rental car company as well as those two future potential rental car companies on logistics, and we're probably going to have to change some things in the short term, being the next two to four years, while we're trying to get our hands on that funding, federal funding, to make those big-time changes for the terminal as well. So we do have adequate space, both in that overflow lot to the south and some other areas on the property where they can utilize, but the customer will still go to their rental car vehicle right on the south end of the terminal.
But if the cars aren't there, they don't have anywhere to go.
Yep, yep.
And they have to go pick them up, I imagine. So anyway, and then the other thing I was asking, we've lost the slide, but on due west, due west of the big hangar and the wash rack for the rental cars, due west, the two buildings there, the warehouse that we have things stored in, and then the old air freight building, are we going to be able to use any CARES Act money? Because those are both very strongly built buildings. I know the one has some asbestos issues, but they're both very, very sound, have good bones and everything else. And there's quite a bit of square footage here. I mean, you can take a look at the one that we're, I think we're warehousing stuff for somebody in there. And so is there a way we can utilize those or actually do an RFP to people that want to rent those? Because that's, people are looking for warehouse space, next to the airport's going to be a biggie, and then obviously the large warehouse building in back of it.
Yeah, we will absolutely try to maximize the revenue out of those two facilities. We've had some change in our tenant portfolio there as it relates to those two buildings here recently. So there is some space available, but we'll definitely try to maximize the utilization and maximize potential partnerships there in the short term. Long term, we're also working with Armstrong and Justin and his team on the planning side to look at where we go, you know, from here in the next 10 to 15 years, which will eventually be before your board to present on those concepts and recommendations. But there may be an opportunity five, 10, 15 years down the road, if we continue to expand, to continue developing that parking lot to the west if necessary. We'll also evaluate other alternatives in that.
Then, last on this round, just because it was asked of me yesterday, do we have any transit from the airport after 8:00 a. m.? Uber, Lyft is not available, I understand?
We don't at this time, so we've focused on our partnership with the County Economic Development Team, Scott Adair and Diana Rios, on trying to get a new occupant for the café in the terminal as priority number one. Right below that, and priority number two, is working with them and County Council and finalizing agreements with Uber and Lyft to have the accessibility there in front of the terminal for those two entities.
It sounds like they can start immediately, once we get over the hurdle.
Exactly.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Continue, please.
All right. So the terminal building study is the next sequential step in, as I mentioned earlier, trying to get additional federal funds on top of the $30 million we're discussing here today for completely reconfiguring, reconstructing, and expanding our terminal facility. We've lightly evaluated this in our current planning project that we're underway with, with Armstrong. And this is just a conceptual drawing that Armstrong and their partner, architecture firm, have drawn up for us. This is really nothing more than boxes on a slide, and I don't want to belittle all the work that Justin and his team have put into this, but really, it's just trying to figure out in general what that flow-through would be in the new footprint, and what would the size of that footprint be. The terminal building study would expand upon that and really set us up, we hope, for a design, hopefully a design-construct type of grant from the FAA in the future. And we intend to pursue as much federal funding as possible. This is an effort to get us underway in that and pursuing those federal funds. And when I'm saying federal funds, I'm talking about the infrastructure bill that was just passed by Congress a few months ago. Within that, I think overall, it was $1.5 trillion, but we've been hyper-focused on just 20, I can't believe I'm saying this publicly, just $25 billion of that is dedicated to airports across the country. And so as we always are for federal funds, we're competing not just with other airports in our region, which includes Crescent City and Redding, and we actually compete with San Francisco International and Oakland and San Jose in our region, but we're competing nationally as well for those federal funds. In that $25 billion dedicated to airports, $5 billion of that is dedicated to terminals. Unfortunately, in that $5 billion pot, there's only a small chunk that's dedicated to airports of our size at ACV, but we're going to be trying to set ourselves up for success, and we're working very hard on that endeavor to try to get our hands on some of that federal funds to address our terminal shortcomings as they are today in all of the growth, excuse me, growth we've experienced in the airline services provided to Humboldt County. Supervisor Bone? I know you got to have something.
I was going to say, I say, wow, you're reading his mind now.
I'm good, and I just, I'm worried about the peripherals to get, and once you get in the building, they can deal, the whole upstairs is always empty. If it's crowded, go upstairs.
We didn't have it on our list because we're kind of running a separate track, but we are planning to utilize CARES Act grant revenues to replace the fuel system at Murray Field. Thank you to Supervisor Bone. He joined us for an advisory committee meeting last month, and the general aviation community spoke up and identified this as being a very high priority, the highest priority, for services to that general aviation community in Humboldt County. So we are working as quickly as we possibly can to get that infrastructure removed and replaced moving forward to better serve that GA community. Just as a bit of background, I did put it in my report, but for the public's consumption, that tank, the records that I've last found as it relates to the installation of that, I believe it was done in 1978, and we have not maintained it in between 1978 and now. And just for reference, I'm a 1986 model, so that thing's a little older than I am, and I need a lot of maintenance myself.
Supervisor Bone, I can tell has a question.
And even with proper maintenance, it has, besides done its normal life in the sea-salt area, it is actually not a legal tank anymore with its dual-wall construction. We have to go to a different, so we do have to upgrade, just like you see gas tanks in town being dug up. They've just, everything has to be upgraded, so we're at that position, so.
Lastly, I just wanted to lay out a-
Supervisor Madron has a question. Sorry, I was looking at the screen. I need a, I need a screen over Supervisor Madron's head, too.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While we're on the Murray Field piece, as I understand it, Northern Air is going to reduce its footprint and stay in operation, which I think is a fantastic thing for the FBO at Murray Field. Will he still be maintaining cameras there? Because that's, I mean, when we talk about fuel tanks, we're talking about safety, you know, people being able to land and actually get fuel. And the other component is being able to see the weather. So will those cameras still be in operation?
So we're actually working with a couple of folks from, sorry, through the chair, I'm still getting the procedure back down here. The, we're working with a couple members from the team over at Cal Poly Humboldt, there, I remembered to say that properly. And one individual is a very active member of our general aviation community, and he, I think in his daytime job, helps the Cal Poly Humboldt group with their IT infrastructure, but he's very knowledgeable when it comes to aviation and is also, Dave Marshall is his name, he's done a great job of trying to incorporate aviation where he can fit it in over there at Cal Poly Humboldt. He led an effort a couple years ago to kind of put together a mock-up or a simulator in the Cal Poly Humboldt library, which I've heard is heavily utilized by students that are going to and from the library there. But he's trying to just drum up that interest in our young people here in Humboldt, particularly at Cal Poly, and he's agreed to help us out in redoing our camera system. We've also, he's helped us start working with Connie Stewart, who's a big driver for improving our connectivity here in Humboldt, and she's going to try to help us with a grant to get those cameras replaced, not just at Murray Field, but at four of our other airports as well. The cameras that we do have are, I believe, 12-ish years old now, I think 2010 was when they were installed, so they, as, with a lot of our other infrastructure, need to be upgraded. So we're trying to work collaboratively on that, and we are making some good progress in getting those replaced as well.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and I thank Supervisor Madron for bringing that up, because at the general aviation meeting the other night, there were, it was fuel at Murray, it was hangar conditions, and it was what was going to happen, and it was very interesting. And I know you had a very good and long conversation with Kyle yesterday, and the whole fubba about how he ended up with having 50,000 or whatever square feet was the former managers just said, just take care of it, we don't, you know, and we didn't charge him. But then with the current rate and everything else, so Kyle's going to get to do just what he wants to do, repair airplanes and work it out. We're working on a, I don't know if you can get into it, a bath, an access bathroom system for him out there, which will probably be like a card lock system, same thing, so they have restroom facilities there. It's kind of, follow the same lines, what we'll do in Garberville, so you can track it. But I do appreciate you actually, I know you guys were working by email, but I appreciate you going out to Murray Field and say, Kyle, what have we got to do? And it took you and him working together, and we have a good, a good solution to that, so thanks.
Yep. Through the chair, thank you Supervisor Madron and Supervisor Bone. The relationship with Kyle, he's been to my office, and I've been to his office, and we've continued communication throughout the last few months as these changes have come about, but Kyle's very excited, or as he's indicated to me, he's excited to continue providing that aircraft maintenance piece, which we're very fortunate to have here in Humboldt, so we're thankful to Kyle for continuing to provide that to our general aviation community. And I think that's all that I had as far as slides, so.
Supervisor Madron, on this, was this on the slides, or do you have more presentation also?
Nope, that was it.
Supervisor Madron.
I just wanted to commend Cody and all his staff, and our consultants, and Kyle, and everybody, including the aviation committee and our incredible chair of that committee who's here with us today. Hard work on everybody's part, working through all these changes, but I want to commend you for really, you know, putting your nose down to the pavement, so to speak, and making it happen.
Thank you.
And I was going to just, and I'm going to go to Supervisor Bushnell, but I did want to offer, if Alex had something she wanted to add, I would consider his part as a staff report if you wanted to, Alex. I mean, you've been there the entire time, so anything you want to add to the staff report? You don't have to. Say, councilwoman?
So what I would really like to do is thank you all for continually supporting the aviation and the aviation department. It's been really important. I've served on the committee for quite a while, under Mike Wilson appointed me, and before that was John Woolley. So I think it's, we've seen a lot happen, and we've made a lot of progress since we've had a department. It's been really valuable. I know that Cody had a lot of work to catch up on the FAA, but now it's time for us to move and get things fixed in the other areas that our aviation community has been very, very patient waiting for it. So I want to thank you for all your support and your help, and I look forward to more support and help in the future from all of you, and we'd be very pleased as the aviation committee, and thank you.
Thank you for being on the committee for all those years and consistency you bring to that committee. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Cody, for that presentation. I was reading on the presentation that the timeline for estimated completion would be 2024.
Yep.
And what month did it specific?
For which piece?
You're lucky to get a year.
Thanks, Cody.
Through the chair, the CARES Act funding, we have to have expended by June of 2024.
Thank you. I just get a lot of questions by the community. And then on the Garberville Airport, thank you for coming down and looking at that facility. If the choice would not be to tear those down and rebuild, it's pretty rough down there.
I'm hoping that that's what our engineers, not that I'm nudging them, but-
I will.
Yeah, I'm hoping that's what we come up with with our evaluation, but we're just trying to document and make sure that we're going down the right path, not just at Garberville, but with all of our facilities, because there's quite a variety in when the hangars were put up and what types of hangars that they are. So there's going to be quite a variety in the fix action for the different hangars, but I think it's fairly safe to assume that we're going to have to demo those hangars at Garberville and replace.
Okay, and then we hadn't, there wasn't much conversation about Dinsmore Airport, and I just, you know, I went out there with you several, five months ago or so, and what kind of discussion is around that facility?
So through the chair, yes, you did come out there, and so the community's fully aware of it. Supervisor Bushnell was swinging a weed eater and chainsaws for about four hours with myself and other folks on a Saturday, so thank you very much again for that help, Supervisor Bushnell. The, part of the CARES Act allocation that I had outlined for reimbursing the county for personnel costs, what we can utilize those funds for once we collect them is things like purchasing equipment or additional staffing, which this board recently blessed us with in improving our staffing model for the aviation department. So there's a variety of things. Chris is also telling me here that, you know, the estimates that we identified up there for the parking lot rehabilitation at ACV, because of oil prices, that's going to be a lot of pavement, so we're probably going to come up a little short right now. So it's just putting those pieces together, and equipment, we anticipate about $1.5 to $2 million of that being new equipment, because it's not just about getting the right amount of staffing through the door so that we can start maintaining our county's airport system the way we should have been, but it's also equipping those individuals properly. Right now, we have, and I think you saw one of them when we were recently at Garberville, tucked between hangars, another piece of equipment that outdates me, and getting that stuff replaced and the right amount of it through the door so that we can be responsive and really improve that customer service to our general aviation community at Garberville and Dinsmore and elsewhere.
So lastly, thank you for that. I get a lot of questions, not only in my district, but throughout Humboldt County, about just general maintenance that would be grass cutting. And so what you're referring to as equipment is that, I know we allocated already monies for, to increase your manpower, so the equipment would be for better facility maintenance, just as long as, you know, around grass cutting?
Absolutely. So part of our estimates right now on new equipment is two new tractors with 15-foot wings behind them, wing-type mowers, and then two more detailed type mowers, zero turns, which will significantly increase our efficiency. Right now, we- Right now, we don't have that tool in the fleet, or we didn't have recent, or previously. And so we actually had staff out there with weed eaters going around each one of our hundreds of taxiway lights at our different airports. So taxiway and runway lights. So that will significantly improve efficiency. But we're also talking about paint removal machines and painting machines and crack sealing machines, because it's comprehensive in the maintenance that we need to improve. It's not just the mowing, but maintaining our pavements properly so that we can maximize when we do repave runways with projects with Armstrong or whatever firm in the future. We can get that 20, 25, 30-year useful life out of that pavement before we need to disrupt operations again.
Thank you. Can we anticipate a maintenance schedule coming forward?
Absolutely.
So the general community can know, oh, Garberville is scheduled for mowing this day or month or whatever and so forth and so on with the airports?
Yeah, through the chair, we are hopeful, we're still working on the hiring process. Interviews are ongoing for those additional positions. We haven't been able to fill them yet, but we're hopeful here in the next month or two that we fill those vacancies. And when we do that, we're anticipating that we'll be able to have five days per week where we can have staff dedicated to our outlying airports. That's not saying we'll be at Dinsmore five days a week, but we have those resources that we can move around and we'll put together a detailed maintenance schedule. So hopefully at least once a week or once every other week, we can get staffing and equipment down to Garberville to properly maintain that, or Dinsmore, or all of our other airports as well.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you too. I know that communications in the last month have been rough in the aviation community and you've taken a lot of criticism. However, I think that through my correspondence with you and with community, that you address those criticisms well and had well-formatted answers. I also, you know, want to acknowledge that there's always two sides to every story and that I really appreciate all you do for the aviation community and how you're moving everything forward. Thank you, Director Ruggets.
Thank you.
All right, and before I go, I had Supervisor Wilson and Bone, but I do want to remind the people on, who are listening and not here in person, that if you wish to speak on this item, you should have your hand raised already by pressing star nine. We do have a few speakers, but there's no time to wait because if your hand is not raised, you will lose your opportunity to speak when you get to public comment. And I want to say, I think Supervisor Bushnell hit that last part right on the head with all the care and concern you put into this. So thank you, Director Ruggets. Supervisor Wilson? Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Well, and I wanted to tag on what Alex said. You didn't get a fully functioning aviation department when you took it over. You, I remember you working 12-hour days to meet TSA and FAA requirements so we could keep our passenger service. We were on the verge of losing TSA because of non-reports. I also know that you worked, mainly because I called you one night, or you called me, but you worked all night when we did the lighting because you couldn't get enough people out there. So you spent the whole night, for a few nights during the construction of the relighting of the airport, and I think that's a commitment. But what I want to say, that, that light at the end of the tunnel you were digging out of and got, got stuck with, you've got to that point. And as Alex said, now you're able to do everything in flow. But the perspective of losing passenger flight was more than serious enough, and I appreciate you stepping up and, because I know the first six months you were thinking, what the hell did I do? But thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other supervisors have a question before we go to public comment? All right, so we do have three speakers with their hands up right now. Reminder, you'll have three minutes. You'll hear a tone when you have 30 seconds left. And our first, Nikki is the first one speaking, 1150. All right, so if you are 1150, you should have received a prompt to press star six to unmute. And again, if you are the person with the last four digits of 1150, this is your opportunity to speak.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Matt Machen. My family has been paying rent in the hangar infrastructure at Murray Field on two hangers for close to 40 years. And I guess I, I'm concerned that we're so far out of touch with what we have in our infrastructure that we need to consult engineers to tell us what's wrong. You know, when I, when something breaks on my house, I don't need an engineer to tell me my roof is leaking. I hire a roofer. And, and following on from that, you know, this is, I know, I appreciate Cody and the spotlight he has brought to all of our infrastructure woes. And it's getting spotlighted now. But, you know, these are issues that we as tenants should have been taking care of over time. And the $5 million to improve and repair the hangers, you know, I feel that that needs to go towards actual improvements of the airport and not to repair deferred maintenance. I think the airport users ought to be able to come together and delineate some improvements to our system rather than spending $5 million just to have what we should have had in the first place. So I appreciate you letting me comment on this and I'll leave it up to you guys.
All right, thank you, Matt. Our second, our next speaker is the last four digits of 2613. Is that correct, Nikki? So if you have the last word.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Leanne Green. I'm the Executive Director of the Southern Humboldt Chamber of Commerce. And I'm calling this morning in support of moving forward with the agreement with Armstrong Consultants to do the hangar study at our county airports, including Garberville. Our chamber was part of the group that recently toured the airport facilities with Supervisor Bushnell and Director Ruggets. And we found them in nearly unusable condition. Some of those hangers at Garberville are over 70 years old and just cannot accommodate modern sport aircraft. And so consequently, we're missing out on much-needed tourism dollars when these pilots fly into other locales. So again, the Southern Humboldt Chamber of Commerce encourages our supervisors to vote to approve this agreement with Armstrong Consultants as the first step to bring overdue modernization and maintenance to these critical infrastructure. And additionally, and we think it's currently an important factor, that this project from start to finish would have no impact on those general fund dollars as the money is coming through the federal CARES Act grant dollars. We thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Leanne. One more reminder, if you wish to speak, press star nine now. We will go to the next speaker, which is the last four digits of 0116.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ash, welcome.
Yeah, I'm Ash Teeter again. I just wanted to say, as the public presentation looked like Cody did some really tough and necessary work, you know, identifying all the infrastructure stuff we did at airports. It's just like, say, that 18 million, that's a lot of money there through the CARES Act. So that's the one question I had, if I don't know if anybody's willing to answer it, is were there any strings attached to, you know, receiving this money, like regarding county-wise with COVID mandates and, you know, previously moving airport systems? You know, physical vax passports that go along with this? Any, just any kind of ongoing COVID stuff tied into the CARES Act? That's, that's what I'm curious about, because 18 million is a lot of money just to hand out for stuff. And I understand it's all stuff that needs to be done, but is there any, anything that they're throwing in as a requirement to receive this funding? That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's the last of the speakers on the phone. Are there any members of the public who'd like to talk on this item? All right, seeing none. We'll go back to the board before I go to Supervisor Wilson with his question. I think the last speaker was talking about, are there, were there strings attached with the coronavirus, these dollars, based on you have to have mask mandates or you have to do vaccinations? Anything COVID-related that we're being made to do because of this? I would think the answer is no.
Thank you, Chair Bass. The answer is, is no. There are strings attached, but they're not related to coronavirus. The mask mandate in airports and in airline aircraft was recently extended. The deadline was approaching here on March 18th. That's been extended to April 18th. So we've continued to abide by that federal mandate, but that was not tied to the CARES Act recipient.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson then Bone?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Thanks, I want to just thank Cody for, again, just like everybody else, I mean, he really took on a, what was a very strained infrastructure, both administratively and certainly physically. We have a lot of airports. I believe we have, and correct me maybe if I'm wrong, we have a, a pretty, we have a high airport density for our population. Is that correct? Meaning we have a lot of airports per capita in our community relative to most other communities. And I just, I want to recognize that our airports and aviation are an important part of our public safety, an important part of our economy, an important part of our, you know, culture of being connected to the rest of the, of the planet. But also understand that we're going to be probably facing some difficult discussions about maintaining these infrastructures due to our low density, in terms of lower population relative to how many airports we have and how much it really costs. And we also have to, I think, and I apologize, I feel like I'm a bit of a turd in the punchbowl of this, of this, of this conversation, but we really have to understand, I think, that even when we take monies for capital costs, and it sounds like, you know, oh, it's, there's no general fund associated with that, there may be general funds allocations and decisions that we're going to have to make in the future that are relative to long-term maintenance. And so what are we, I think we do have to, when this comes back to us, really evaluate what that means for us in the long term and what our economic values are associated with that and the other values we may or may not receive. And we're going to have to have them all in, in, in competition with everything else that we're doing in these, in these spaces. And so it's a challenge for rural communities for sure. It's not just for aviation, it's in our roads, it's in everything we do. And we're just, we're strained for, from, from a infrastructure perspective countywide, whether it's our facilities for all of our employees and everything else. And this, these facilities that we're talking about here are in competition with all those in, in the future. And I just want to have us be prepared for those harder. There are going to be some tougher conversations because if we really are having facilities where our director and a supervisor are going down on a weekend with, you know, staff and those sorts of things, and if that's, if that's how we're moving forward with maintaining these facilities, that's not necessarily the most sustainable path for us. And we have to really think hard about what is sustainable, what is, you know, what, what we, we just have to really have those discussions and, and also in a trend where fuel prices are going up, private aviation has been declining typically. And so what are the trajectories and what are we, what are we obligating ourselves to in the future in terms of these things? That being said, I fly, a lot of people fly. We do, we, it's important to us in so many ways. It's just that we're just, I think, going to have to have some, you know, real conversations about what we want and what we actually can maintain and sustain in the future. So, thanks, Cody, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. I think you gave us the quote of the day.
Thanks.
The punchbowl.
I'm sure somebody will get that, you know, in the paper somewhere.
Usually Rex gets the quote. Supervisor Bone? Oh, Supervisor Bushnell? We can also take a motion to receive and file at some point in time.
I'll make that motion.
First of all, does Cody want to respond?
If I could, Chair Bass, thank you Supervisor Wilson through the chair for your comments. We, we are working on a comprehensive and really almost a strategic plan, if you will, for our airports. We're underway with Justin and his team from Armstrong right now in that endeavor. And I'm excited to say that we will be going out to each community near our six airports. Neyland and Dinsmore, we may pull into, you know, either a Murray Field or Ronerville conversation. But we'll have at least four public meetings, one at ACV, one at Murray, one at Ronerville, and one at Garberville. And that's separate from what we're talking about here today. That's really trying to help us and get community feedback on top priorities moving forward. But I do anticipate we, you know, will be looking at what is the reality of, of our six airport system moving forward and evaluate that and get the public's feedback in that planning process because that's another critical part. It's not just the infrastructure investment today, but that forward-looking planning for the future as well. So we're working on that too.
Okay, so there was a motion to receive and file the presentation. And Supervisor Bushnell, was that your, did you get your question answered or?
No.
Okay, can you?
Who made the motion?
Supervisor Wilson?
Oh, okay.
And we got a motion at second, so Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to respond just slightly to Supervisor Wilson. I don't think supervisors have to go out to airports I chose. So, it wasn't required or asked of me. So that's not a trend, I don't think. And then also, I just would like to clarify, I get lots of questions about the Shelter Cove Airport. And Cody, can you just kind of hit on that just a little bit?
Sure, through the chair, I don't have it in my notes here before me, but Supervisor Bushnell, many years ago, I think it was late 80s, early 90s, Shelter Cove Airport was a part of the county system. And at that time, it was handed over approximately that timeframe. It was handed, handed over to the district out there at Shelter Cove. So that is no longer a county-owned airport. We don't have anything to do with, we, my department does not have anything to do with the operation of that airport.
Thank you for clarifying. And I think also I've gotten questions, I don't know why they come to me, they probably come to all of us, but the Hoopa is similar?
Correct, yeah. I believe it was the 80s or early 90s, the county airport system used to be nine airports, now it's six. The Hoopa Airport, Shelter Cove, and I forget the third one, it made, Willow Creek, that, that were kind of, the county was dissolved of responsibility and it was handed off to other entities for those three airports.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone, you were reaching for your microphone again. Did you have anything else to add?
No, I was just, I was just saying that our problem is, is we're 4,100 square miles and it's tended to, for safety reasons and everything else, we've tended to build, have airports and that doesn't include the, I've got 15 private airstrips in my head right now that I've either landed or flown over. So I just, there's quite a few private strips that we don't oversee, but for safety sakes, and that's back in the day when helicopters and things like that, we didn't have as much but for reach and some of those things. So air ambulance, basically, so. And I, and, and we know, just like when Willow Creek, Hoopa, and all the other ones have changed, I know you're looking at, because it's a Hill Attack Base more than anything up on Neyland and a foggy out for a lot. Neyland, and a foggy out for a lot of, you know, come pick me up on Neyland, is used quite a bit for that. But it's mainly a hill attack base, and the same thing I see eventually, probably with the amount of usage, Dinsmore will probably be somewhere along those lines, but we'd have to give it to somebody in an adequate shape, because I know we do have trouble with the river encroaching, so.
All right. I do see the vote screens up. Supervisor Bone, are you able to get your vote screen up? Yeah, I think you can. We're going to have to work on this. One of the, well, we got a motion a second, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. I know, we can do that now, but eventually, we got to try to get this.
Yeah, could be never. So Supervisor Bone, you're a yes, or are you still working on that?
Well, you can just do that. He said yes, but the computer stays, goes to sleep, apparently.
I'll do it for you.
After I did all this.
After you did all that. It's practice. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then. Supervisor Bone?
Sure.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you for being here and sharing all the time with us. Before we go to the closed session portion, I do want to read, because I don't know when we're going to come back, I'd like to read, we're adjourning in memory of one of our community members who's no longer with us, Carol Masterson. And a lot of people wouldn't know who Carol was, but if you had any involvement with the League of Women Voters, she was the person who basically would reach out and arrange for us to be at all the events, and she was very active for the League. So I was really sad to see that she had passed away. Okay. So now we'll go on to closed session. And County Council?
Public comment on non-
It's 1:30 time set. Three of us will be back. I mean, we need three back. No, we can't, because-
No, no, no. Can I finish my question?
I don't know, it depends.
Could we adjust that time set that it could, it comes at the end of? Because, I mean, some people-
Well, we'll work on that. We're not going to do it during this meeting. No, that's fine. It's just that it's not as simple. All right. May we have a report from County Council?
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the Board to meet in closed session on two items. The first pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1 is to discuss existing litigation in cases SBC 200, 30802, and 30803. The second pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 and E3 is to discuss written communication of potential litigation regarding actions of the Humboldt County Auditor and Controller and Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. I don't see any members of the public with their hands up, and I don't see any members here that like to come and visit. Do we want to take an estimated time of when we will be reporting out? Or just come back at 1:30 and we'll report out?
Chair, I'd recommend we just do that at 1:30.
Okay, thank you. Maybe it's because we haven't started. Oh, here we go. So, County Council, can we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Chair. On item M1, the Board voted 5 to 0 to authorize continued defense during the review process under the existing agreements. And on item M2, there is no reportable action.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the public comment portion on non-agenda items. Press star nine now if you wish to speak. We will have a quick session. No one's got their hands up right now, so I will, it's not showing up on mine.
We just had a hand raised, and I just got to put it in, but if you want me to call them, I can call them now.
Sure. And then let me know the next one as they come in.
Okay.
Okay. Unless-
Well, if you're on the phone.
All right, everybody now? No? So, can they hear us? They see us?
Yeah.
Okay, we're trying to, just give us a few minutes to-
I mean, we can let them talk, they just won't show up on the screen. And I can do the manual timer.
All right. And I'm going to, yeah, I'm not getting, I'm not seeing this part one. All right, so would you like to call the first person?
Yeah. Call her that ends in 0116.
All right, welcome. I think you pressed star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello, my name is Ash Teeter with the Humboldt Freedom Coalition, HumboldtFC.com, commenting on non-agenda items. What used to be relegated to the realm of conspiracy theory when speaking of COVID shots altering a person's DNA is now openly admitted by Moderna in a new business venture which I nailed to the board. The mRNA COVID vaccine is unexpectedly reverse-transcribing into human DNA, creating strange DNA genetic codes in human cells, including code of a P132 tumor gene, as well as permanent DNA code to produce spike protein. While this contrary to the promises of how the COVID vaccines make harmless spike protein that goes away in two to three days, more and more science experiments confirm that mRNA COVID vaccines have far-reaching and disturbing permanent genetic effects. I also emailed the Board about the nine pages of side effects found in the documentations Pfizer was planning on waiting 55 years to release on the first three months of the vaccine rollout, until they were ordered to do so by a judge. That was just the first batch. More documents are on their way in the next weeks or months here. Also, while COVID was being swept under the rug, media attention has been steered toward the Ukraine, where it's becoming apparent that multiple US-funded biolabs have been taken over by Russian forces, with media touting fears that Russians might use biological agents as weapons. This is admitting that these biolabs were working on biological agents that could be used as bioweapons, sounding strangely similar to instances that were reported in the Wuhan lab around the time that COVID was unleashed upon the world. All I'm really suggesting, Chair, is that it is becoming more and more apparent that we were all lied to multiple times over the course of this fraudulent pandemic. It is time to come to terms with reality and own up to the mistakes that have been made and move forward focused on local interests and an open and warranted distrust for globalist corporate regulations and recommendations. Now is the time to end this fraudulent state of emergency.
Yeah, I'd also just like to add that with all that understood, it's time to end the medical discrimination at work and stop, you know, mandatory testing for people who have not gotten these shots that are now, it's out in the open, it's public knowledge that there are, you know, questionable side effects, so people have legitimate concerns why they didn't get them. So let's just start treating people fair.
All right, whoops. Thank you, Ash. Sorry, those three minutes go fast. Do we have any other hands up that you see? I'm not, okay.
It's in there now.
There's one. Yes, so our next speaker, and if you are interested, you should have called and pressed star nine by now. Wait, where does the number go? Oh, 0326. Man, you're too fast now. So I believe that's Mr. Wilson, so 0326.
This is Charles Wilson. My wife had a separate comment, but anyway, I heard about this Pfizer nonsense that they had the secret data and everything that they wouldn't release. As I understand it, they said they would entertain requests to release the data in May of 2025. What's that, is that three years ago, after we've all been vaccinated and everything there under force? The thing is, they, the judge forced them to give three months of data, and they already showed that they had over 1,200, 1,300 deaths from the vaccine. Now, we only heard at the very beginning, all these people like Barry Bonds and everything like that, they're old and fragile, and so they just died, they were going to die anyway. Okay, well, you know, they put the spin on it there. Then you hear this, you know, the first, the COVID there, they locked up the cruise ships. Oh, and the people on the cruise ships, we had to protect the people from them. And then the people on the cruise ship were locked up with the people that did have the COVID, and they got it, and they got even more. Sort of like the one, New York went and sent all the people that had the disease over to the convalescent homes and everything there, infected them, and killed 18,000 people there. And then the thing is, you know, we, it's getting to be a media, you know, how can you trust the media anymore? How can we trust government anymore when they hide all these things from us? But the thing is, we're supposed to comply because we are supposed to feel guilty about protecting grandma, protecting the children, but they're not interested in protecting us. And it's amazing how all this stuff goes on, and it just gives you the general feeling that media, the politicians, and the whole set of government cannot be trusted anymore, no more than the Russians can be trusted. So, anyway, it's, just like on the cruise ship there where they had the, they had pulled back in port because they had 58 cases of COVID on the cruise ship. All the people on the cruise ship have to be fully vaccinated, but they got the COVID. Now, doesn't that imply that the vaccine is not so wonderful? And why are the-
All right, thank you. Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. It's now Genevieve's turn. Can you reset that? All right, Genevieve, are you there? Where did it go?
Hello, this is Genevieve.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the chance to speak up, because like I say, I'm a nurse for 45 years. I talk to so many people, and just make sure everybody be aware of it. The government or the media are lying to us. This is not a vaccine, a biological agent. Because I have so many people, when I talk to them, how to prevent it, you need to take your vitamin D and zinc and C, vitamin C and plenty of C. And they say, oh, no, this is a vaccine, wipe out polio, wipe out smallpox. Please remember, this is not a vaccine. And there's two kinds of scientists. Scientists follow the money, and scientists stand up for the right. And so many doctors cannot function because they believe what they believe. This is not a vaccine. Please remember that. They mess up our mind, it's a biological agent, first of all. And also, get the book, The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert Kennedy, so you know the fact. Anything, anybody in your life, you need to read and find out the truth and decide it from your own brain. Don't persuade with the media like a sheep. Please, don't follow that. And then, take care of yourself. God and the common law, the natural law, you know for you to breathe. You don't breathe anything out there. And science proved that. If you wear a mask, you are in a dangerous level of obstructing, absorption of oxygen. So, that doesn't work. And then the whole, the lumen is too big, it's not preventing from the virus. And then build your immunity up. Take care of yourself. Like right now, we have $16,000 from the contact tracing. Oh, my crap, everybody got it. So how are you going to contract anybody? Don't waste money for that. That's all I can say. And then also, trust yourself. If you say, take care of yourself, build your immunity up, rest, bring up all the junkies stuff like the Humboldt crush. Bring it up, get it out, you'll be fine. And don't worry so much. And all the, I wish people would stop the testing on the student in college, and also keep using the mandate, make sure all the people have to get vaccine to go to school, that's wrong. A 38-years-old woman, she wants children, but she doesn't have her period anymore. And I also present that for the school in McKinneville, the high school president, I say, anything, you should have an informed consent, I mean, all the knowledge you know, and then let the people decide, but they won't let me talk to them. I show them the film, the documentary about folk on the car, you say, it's going to affect the people, reproductive organs, so-
All right, thank you, Genevieve. Thank you. And, Nikki, see any, all right, there are no more hands up, so we will adjourn, and we're adjourning in the memory of Carol Masterson. Well, there's nobody in the audience either, correct? Good.